Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of September 6, 2022. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Burton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman. Freeman is absent. McGee.
Here.
Mahal. Mahal is absent. Porter. Porter is absent. Prather.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens. Stevens is absent. We have six present.
Okay, thank you. If you'll please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our country, our community, and our freedom. We thank you for all of our current military service members and the many veterans who have served in the past. We recognize that without them, we would not enjoy our freedoms that we have. We thank you for their service and sacrifice and pray you bless each one of them. We also thank you for our police and fire first responders in our community and throughout this country and pray for their safety. We thank you for our new Belvidere Police Officer, Matthew Davis. We ask that you give each of us wisdom, compassion, patience, and courage as we conduct our city business here this evening. We ask for these things in Christ's name, amen. Okay, I don't believe we have any public comment registered this evening. Hi, John. How are you? Welcome. We have Item 4, Approval of Minutes. We have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Belvidere City Council of August 15, 2022, as presented. Could I have a motion to that effect, please?
Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderwoman Prather.
Any corrections, any discussion regarding that motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. No, I don't have that. Okay, we have notice, we have a public notice of a public hearing this evening regarding the annexation agreement, annexing certain territory lying north of Interstate 90, east of Trip Road, and west of Genoa Road to the city of Belvidere, Illinois. Notice of the Public Hearing on Anexation Agreement, Belvidere City Council, Belvidere, Illinois, on September 6, 2022, at 7:00 PM. A public hearing will be held by the Mayor, City Council of the City of Belvidere in the City Council Chambers at 401 Whitney Boulevard, Belvidere, Illinois, for the purpose of considering and hearing testimony as to an ordinance authorizing an annexation agreement relating to real property generally located west of Genoa Road, east of Trip Road, and immediately north of Interstate 90, and legally described with the legal description. This has been filed. It was dated August 9, 2022, by the city clerk Sarah Turnipseed, and was published August 18 in the Boone County Journal.
Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate to open the public hearing at 7:13 PM on September 6, 2022.
Okay. The hearing is open. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I suppose there doesn't appear to be anybody in the audience, but for the people at home, I'll make a brief description of what the project is so that we can take a little bit more time before we get to the actual annexation agreement.
Thank you.
This annexation, as the councils heard, both the committee of the whole, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission previously, in which the platte subdivision, the zoning, and the special use were considered, is separate from the public hearing that evening. Have already considered this annexation, and it's an annexation of a fairly large portion of property that is described in legal description previously mentioned, and it will allow for significant retail and commercial and potential industrial development within that corridor. It will include the extension of Crystal Parkway from Genoa Road to Trip Road, and expand the corporate boundaries and increase our tax base. So unless there's somebody else that wishes to speak to this, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing.
The only thing else I would like to add to that is that the Genoa Road interchange has long, long been overdue for development. I know under Mayor Burton, we did, he did accomplish the Walmart and some surrounding businesses, but to the west of Genoa Road, that certainly has been undeveloped. And I think part of it, I would have thought that may have been developed 20 or 25 years ago. That hasn't been the case, but this certainly, I think, after talking with the council, I think it's a fantastic economic development for the city, and it allows us to proceed in the future with further development. I want to thank the developers, the Heidner Group, and I want to thank everybody that's involved. I want to thank the city council as well. And I guess with that being said, we can close the public hearing at 7:16. Okay, under Special Messages and Proclamations, we have with us this evening. We have Dory Kernan, and we also have Lisa Shablinski, and they are with the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. I have a proclamation to read regarding that, and I would ask if you would join me here. So this is Constitution Week, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government, in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17, 2022, marks the 235th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through September 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, at Clinton Morris, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Belvidere, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23 as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of Belvidere, Illinois, on the sixth day of September, in the year of our Lord 2022. So, thank you, Laura. I want to give you that. Thank you very much. And I will turn the microphone over to you. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Laura Shablinski, Region of the Asa Katrel Chapter in Belvidere. Our chapter consists of 58 members, strong and growing. The National Society Daughters of the American Revolution celebrates the Constitution of the United States every day through our mission statement of historic preservation, education, and patriotism. Our belief in the Constitution is so strong that the DAR in 1955 petitioned Congress to set aside September 17 through the 23 annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the US Congress and signed into public law number 915 on August 2, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Now, I am asking something of you as leaders, ambassadors, if you will, of your community to join the DAR in educating those around you, young and/or old, coworkers, and family about the Constitution of the United States during the week of September 17 through 23. What does it mean to you, and what does it mean to them? Thank you on behalf of the Asa Katrel Chapter in honoring us with this proclamation. We look forward to working with you and the community soon. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thanks for coming. Thank you. Excuse me, Item 7, Approval of Expenditures. This evening, we have none. Item 8, Committee Reports and Minutes of City Officers. We have the approval of the minutes of the Committee of the whole for public safety, finance, and personnel of August 22, as presented. Could I have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. Any questions, any comments, any corrections on those minutes? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Under 9, Unfinished Business, we have A, Ordinance 591-H for a Second Reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between the city of Belvidere and Donald K. Bush, Sr., Belvidere Retail LLC and OM Group LLC. Could I have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Frank. Any question regarding that annexation motion? Okay, hearing none. Now, this will take a supermajority, I believe.
Correct. Require eight aye votes, and the mayor isn't entitled to vote on us.
Okay, thank you. The clerk will help me with the roll, please.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, motion passed, thank you. And we have Item B, Ordinance 592-H for a Second Reading this evening, an ordinance annexing certain territory lying north of Interstate 90, east of Trip Road, and west of Genoa Road, excuse me, to the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois. Can I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any questions regarding that motion? Right, hearing none. All those in favor, when their name is called, will answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And we have Ordinance 593-H before us for a Second Reading, an ordinance approving a preliminary platte titled Belvidere Retail Subdivision. Can I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any questions, any discussion regarding that motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And we have Item D, Ordinance 594-H for a Second Reading, an ordinance approving a final platte titled Belvidere Retail Subdivision. Can I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion regarding that motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And we have Item E, Ordinance 595-H for a Second Reading, an ordinance granting a zoning district change from RH Rural Holding District to PB Planned Business District between Trip and Genoa Roads north of I-90. Can I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Frank, second. Second by Alderman McGee. Any discussion regarding the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll.
McGee.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And before us for a Second Reading, we have Ordinance 596-H, an ordinance granting a zoning district change from RH Rural Holding District to PI Planned Industrial District between Trip and Genoa Roads north of I-90. Can I have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman McGee. Any questions, any concerns regarding that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, when their name is called, will answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Seven in favor?
And Item G, we have before us for a Second Reading, Ordinance 597-H, an ordinance granting a special use to allow planned development within the planned business districts, southwest Crystal Parkway and Genoa Road. Can I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. Any questions, any concerns regarding, questions regarding that motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Snow.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Okay, motion passed, thank you very much. And we have Item 10, Under New Business. We have... Yes.
Did you want to say something?
Did you want to say something, Bruce?
I want to thank the mayor.
Come on up here. Come on up here. Do you mind?
Put you on TV.
Sure. Sorry.
I was about to say, that's a year and a half, two years' worth of work, and very... I was expecting confetti from the ceiling.
As a developer, I'd like to thank the mayor, the city council, staff. As Mr. Drell has said, we've been working on this for about a year and a half, and we know it's going to be a successful project, and with the help we've been given by staff and the mayor, I know this is a lot for, you think, for us to bite off, but we know we can make it successful, and it'll bring more business, more revenue to the city, and I don't see a downside in the project at all. And we are going to have a groundbreaking, when we can schedule it with the city, everybody will be invited, and we just want to make it as successful as possible. We intend to close on the ground next Thursday, and we intend to start moving some material that next day, and then we will start the following week. So we're going to proceed along as fast as humanly possible. Aggressively, we will be open sometime mid-winter to early spring, and I can't say enough, this... the reception we've gotten here in Belvidere, I've been doing this for 53 years, and this is one of the best receptions and the best business-friendly and fore-thinking city that we've, one of the few that we've been able to deal with. And all I can do is thank all of you for your help, and you're all invited to the groundbreaking. We'd really like to have everybody there and make it as successful as we can for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce Larson, and thank you to the Heidner Group, and please convey that to them. Okay, and thank you. Okay, under New Business, and to the council, whenever the groundbreaking date is decided, I will give you plenty of notice. If you can be in attendance, that would be wonderful, so, and thank you for your help. Item 10A, Ordinance 598-H is on the agenda for first reading, and ordinance amending Section 110-91 stop signs of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code to add the intersection of West Harrison and Ruby Street as a four-way stop. That will be forthcoming as a second reading. We have Item B, Motion to Waive a Referral to Committee, Section 2-88 of the City Code, in reference to allowing LULAC to utilize the City Hall parking lot for a Market Days Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. Do we have any discussion regarding the motion in second on the floor? Okay, all those in favor will answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And Item 10C, we have a motion, I would like a motion to approve LULAC to use City Hall Parking Lot for the Market Days Event for Sundays, for the Sundays in September of 2022, commencing September 9, 2022, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM pursuant to an agreement acceptable to the city attorney and the mayor. Amplified music and alcohol shall be prohibited. Can I get a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman McGee. Any questions regarding that motion?
Mr. Mayor, as we discussed earlier, currently, the city does not have a policy for the private use of its public property. We, of course, do allow block parties, on a case-by-case basis approved by the city council, have general conditions we put upon those, but we don't have, other than our Parks Code, which allows people to, for example, rent a small space for a gathering in one of the two parks that we own. We really don't have a policy on that. My recommendation to previous administrations, as well as to Mayor Morse, has not been particularly firm. It's a little bit wishy-washy, and the reason for that is this. The one thing that every government body needs to know is, once they make a part of their property open to the general public as a quote "public forum," where they can rent it, you cannot control who gets to rent it. It could be LULAC this week, it could be Emmanuel Lutheran Church next week, it could be the Ku Klux Klan the third week, or in reference to a very old movie that I happen to love, the Illinois Nazi Party, in a future week. And as Skokie found out years and years and years ago, when I was a small, young man, they cannot prohibit the use of their property once it's been open to the general public based upon viewpoint. So that's a negative to doing something like that, is you lose some control over the use of the property and the message it sent. The, that rarely happens. I mean, it hasn't really, I can't recall it happening in Illinois since Skokie, and I think that was the 1970s. The obvious benefits are not legal-related, they're economic-related. More people downtown, there's more traffic downtown, there's more people visiting your stores, your shops, your restaurants. It's the whole reason we do strolls. So there's that obvious benefit to doing it as well. Another benefit is you are helping out a local nonprofit entity. Frankly, that's invested in your community by going that route. So one of the things the council has to weigh in their minds is, is the good outweigh any pause they may have with the ability to use public property for these purposes. One of the, and so actually, when this came up, you know, I started looking at it, and if the council wishes to move forward, because there's two of these on the agenda tonight, if the council wishes to move forward with these kinds of things, I'll probably come forward with an ordinance in the near future. I already started drafting agreements that include the agreements that create a procedure by which people can do this in the future, possibly without coming to council, maybe with coming to council, we'll see, but to allow for these kinds of activities. One of the conditions, or one of the concerns, I should say, I have with parking lots specifically, is it's a parking lot. People park there. They're allowed to park there. The, I think it's parking lot number five on the other side of the tracks across from City Hall. That one has 24/7 parking. There is no restriction other than duration of parking in a lot across from City Hall. So, for example, this event starts at 1:00 in the afternoon. Well, somebody goes in there and parks at 10:00 in the morning, are we going to tow them when the event starts? Are we going to close the parking lot earlier so that, you know, the night before, so that people don't park there? That's something that we're going to have to address, because I can very well see a car being there, and LULAC calls the PD and says, "There's a car in our lot." And the PD is going to say, "Well, we don't know what to do." So that is, that is a practical concern that came to my mind over the weekend as I was working on this. So I want to get those things out to you, because, really, I mean, the parking lots are there for parking, and downtown parking. You know, if you dedicate that lot to LULAC for three hours, it's probably not going to impact Buchanan Street or south side of downtown, because we still have the lot across the street or across the train tracks. But those are the issues that you'll need to consider as you deliberate on this.
Alderman Snow.
So how about waivers of liability? Because if all of a sudden they are using it, are they held responsible for liability issues, just like we are as a city, held liable if somebody trips, falls, and hurts themselves, we're subject to issues or problems? Do they wind up signing an agreement waiving that, and they need to pick up coverage for that?
Two-part answer to that. First part, our best protection is always our own insurance, and yes, we are covered for this kind of event. We can do this. Our insurance company would cover it. Second part is, of course, I already started planning to get another agreement. It's been out for comments. Gina had three comments to it, I believe. Ms. Hanson had one. As far as an agreement goes, then, one of the biggest things in there is that they're required to maintain, I put in $3 million, that's awful steep, but that's kind of what our insurance company likes to see. It could be $1 million, but $3 million coverage, commercial liability insurance coverage, naming the city as an additional insured, so we get picked up by their insurance. And then I have a second provision by which the indemnified defendant holds harmless in the event of an accident or something else. You know, the reality is, the insurance is, we're going to get sued if something happens. It's our property. No different than if somebody parks there and goes to the Jack Rose at night and then walking through a parking lot, slips and falls, they're going to sue us. So, yes, there is coverage within the agreements, and again, they'll cover us, but our best protection is always our own insurance as well.
Alderwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. So are we, I don't see an agreement in here, because we haven't done this yet. So are we, I don't see an agreement in here because we haven't done this yet, but are we going to charge? I don't want to see, you know, in the future that somebody's wanting to have something there every single weekend and then we have to close that parking lot off every weekend from whatever time to whatever time, whether it's all day or all day until 10:00 at night or whatever they want. If we're not going to be able to say no to them, I'm assuming that the other lot would be better, but I'm assuming we can't really close that off being so there's public mailboxes and, you know, Russ's dog wash in there.
So a couple of aspects of that one, yeah, you could close it off. That one's probably got the worst surface though as far as tripping falls and things like that. With respect to the agreement, I apologize, this kind, the reason why there's a motion to waive the referral to committee is it came up very fast. And I did not have agreements drafted in time to get them into packets. I have the majority of the agreement written. And I also started putting together, like I said, that policy for future uses. So yes, you could charge a fee. The fees would not be generated or designed to make money for the city, it'd be to compensate for the loss of the opportunity to park there for our business constituents and our citizens and maybe for any wear and tear on the parking lot and any, anything else. And it would also include, the agreement's got built in, a $500 deposit. It's refundable deposit that would cover if they don't pick up their trash, remove their trash, cause damage to the parking lot, things like that. And they still have to pay, if there's more than $500, they have to pay additional too. But make sure we have $500 in hand to start that process. That's built into the agreement. The amount of the fee, I did not put into it yet, that's something we can discuss. I know that, oh gosh, if I call the conservation district, it depends on this, well, the school district, of course, rents property, we know that. You can go rent the gymnasium for banquet hall. You can rent the gymnasium for funeral. You can rent it for church services. We've seen that been done, or done at, at North as well as BHS. And their fee is based upon whether you're affiliated with the school or not affiliated with the school. It's based upon the number of hours you're going to use it for, all kinds of things, but it runs anywhere between $125. I could tell it's per hour or every two hours, but theirs is fairly significant. Conservation District charges some fees. If you need picnic tables, I think they charge $25 per picnic table. I can't remember, Gina, do you recall if there was a, a base fee? If it's over, I think, 75 people?
Conservation District, it was not a set fee. It was, are you just renting like the grassy field or do you want the pavilion? Or do you need a parking lot? Do you need picnic tables? They had multiple factors that kept adding on to the total. And Park District was kind of similar. And I think they also had fees, you know, midweek versus weekend because of the demand. I think it was more expensive on the weekend as well.
Yeah. So we could do that. My initial thought was a $500 fee. If for no other reason is that we don't want to be the cheapest one in town to, everybody flock to us. But I, I don't know what would actually be appropriate. That'd be something for the council to discuss as well.
And I think it's important to note that these, this event was going to be done last year, I think, and we'd run into a time constraint regarding rental of the, or use of the parking lot, what have you. But the reason that we don't have a, anything in writing for you is that, Gina, correct me if I'm wrong, but this just had, really, the city had just been approached with this. I think you have just been approached with this. And the parameters that needed to be met certainly have run into a, a time constraint. So.
Correct. There, there was a, a larger festival with a associated organization last year that never came through. LULAC brought this up last year and then I didn't hear anything for a while. And then this spring they brought up again and it was, okay, well, before we can even continue, I need to know dates, times, what you plan on doing, a site plan, something in writing. Because, you know, verbally, things change constantly. So I, I need something in writing, bring to council, didn't hear from them for a while. Then it came up again and it was, again, I need stuff in writing. And it wasn't till just a week and a half ago, I finally got it in writing. And they wanted to start it this last Sunday. We said, no, the earliest it could be, would be this agenda. And same with the other request on here. It was something that verbally, lots of phone calls, stuff like that, but not getting it in writing until about a week and a half ago. So again, I get, I get hypothetical phone calls all day long, every day. So until I get stuff in writing, I can't present it to you guys. So yeah, these came in writing quite late.
As far as a fee goes, there's nothing to prevent you from allowing these to go through without a fee and then pursuant to policy in the future establish a fee. Do this as a kind of a, let's see how it works out sort of thing. I know, yeah. I would want a deposit to though as well, and like I said, a $500 deposit into the agreement already because they're going to provide their own trash cans. They're going to have to haul it away because, you know, even if, even if we had trash cans out there and we took it away, we'd still have a cost of putting it in our dumpsters and landfilling it. And they should be responsible for their own trash. I put in provisions, that's also in the motion about no amplified music. I put in no amplified noise of any kind. I don't want people running around with a bullhorn. When we started strolls, we had a lot of concern from our neighbors, you know, in proximity of St. James Church and, and what was the noise going to be like. And I can imagine what this could do then if we had parties every weekend in one of our parking lots. So there was that and I, I kind of prohibited those things in the agreement as well. And that would come back to you if we go forward these in the future as part of a policy. One of the other questions that I think Gina raised, and I don't know the answer to it. You know, they're going to have a farmer's market or market days or whatever it is in the parking lot. Currently, when we close down Whitney, we often do for strolls, concrete barricades for public safety. I mean, that's not really going to be possible in this kind of situation unless we want to hire overtime on public works to move these things, and we don't want to do that. So they'd have to provide some kind of a portal barricade on their own to close off that parking lot. But that is another issue that I think was Gina identified as, you know, we've been doing these, these concrete barricades. That being said, I, I came downtown, I think it was last Thursday night, and Whitney was closed in front of city hall for some motorcycle rally they do on Thursday nights. And they just had a couple of BPW horses up, you know, to, to block off traffic. And that seemed to work, so.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again. So there's like a big difference in these two. This is a farmer's market type thing. The next one is wanting a stage. I'm assuming that they're going to be having music being so it's an Independence Day celebration thing. And it's also going until 9:00 at night. So how can we tell these people they can't have any music, but the other ones can?
I think the same prohibitions on both of them, isn't it Gina? I guess it's not.
Is that the last sentence?
Yeah. And I don't know if that's their event, if they can do it that way. But I would suggest we stick with one event. Oh, I see, you're worried about treating them differently.
Yeah. Answer to that, it is prohibited on both of them, Alderwoman Freeman. However, I think it's a good point, you know, here, the, what you brought up is a good point. I think it's, the city attorney touched on it a little bit earlier, is, does the city of Belvidere have, is there other locales? Is there other options to go ahead and rent a facility besides city hall? And if, or besides our city parking lots? And if we do rent that, then we are going to be subjected to potentially renting that out, as the city attorney so eloquently pointed out, to a variety of individuals who may choose to want to locate there and have festivities. So do we want to get into the rental business? Do we want to get into that business? Is there perhaps another way for, you know, an event to be held besides the city parking lot? But it does, it, it will make us, you know, have to open it up for whoever puts it, puts in for it.
I, I do want to make one thing clear, both upon what Alderman Freeman mentioned and just now with the mayor expanded upon. We can, we cannot, if we open this up, we cannot discriminate based upon viewpoint. You can always, I don't want to use the word discriminate, but use discretion, whether it's the council or somebody vested with the authority, the mayor, the clerk, the public works director, whomever. They can use discretion along more objective criteria like the size of the event, it's just too big. The timing of the event, whether you want to do it the weekend before Heritage Days weekend and we need to be working on the parking lot and getting it ready and it's just not available. You can certainly deny it for that reason. The time of year, I'm sorry, our parking lot's covered with snow and ice and we don't want people walking around on it. Perfectly okay to deny it then. It conflicts with one of our strolls events. You can certainly deny it then. We've already had the parking lot booked two of the four Sundays this month. We don't want any more done. You can deny it for that reason. As long as there are objective reasons to say no to somebody, you can always say no. You can always treat people slightly differently. You could allow amplified music, for example. I put that in there just because I was afraid of the concern. The council could say, no, surely go ahead and have music. One to four might be appropriate to have music. The council could decide, but not after dusk. And those are all criteria that the council could look at and say, okay, yes, we agree here, no, we don't agree here. It could decide that music's fine on, on parking lot seven because of the lack of proximity of residential housing, although there is some down the street, whereas there's closer housing at the downtown lot. So yeah, you can use discretion as long as it's subjective and you can have a rational basis for using that discretion as to when it's rented out, when it's not available for being rented out, restrictions as to hours and, and noise and things like that. Certainly, you don't have to treat everybody the same as long as it's based upon some objective reason.
Alderman Snow?
Well, I think for discussion purpose at this point, the aspect of doing this, I, I see the point of we're not in the business of being a banquet hall facility. I get that. These two cases might help evaluate whether or not it brings more people downtown for the purpose of stimulating economic prosperity for the, the group downtown. If it doesn't seem to do anything for it, then, you know, use extreme discretion on doing it on a regular basis by, by all stretch. And by, right now, I think at this point, we would have case by case, come to city council. We approve block parties on a regular basis. So I wouldn't see that as a big issue. We also approve parades that are held by private entities per se, or organizations. So there's no reason that that would fall into the same kind of parameters. It either works for us or it doesn't and go that route. So I think trying to come up with a generic policy that guidelines, but not necessarily ordinance, so that we're not locked in, might be a good way to proceed.
And you actually made some good points. We already do parades. The, I probably shouldn't use the word, but the Easter, the IOU club does the Halloween parade, not Easter parade, Halloween parade. The Park District, a governmental partner does, I believe, is at the Christmas parade, hometown Christmas parade, who does Heritage Days. That's, we do. And, and in theory, actually, strolls is run by the chamber now, a private entity. Although in each one of those cases, we are in partnership with them. And that's, I think, one of the big differences. But the keynote, you're right, is, is, you know, Mike Drell could decide he wants to have a parade and make an application to the city of Belvidere for a parade permit to use portions of Whitney Boulevard for a parade. And certainly that comes before the council now and that is a private use of, of a public property. So.
Parades, no. Alder, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again. So when you were speaking before, it was a question that I had. So these two only pertain to city hall parking lot, but something like this would be all our municipal lots? Like, you know, the one, the new one off Lincoln Avenue by the, by the river is lot bigger and so it would be all of our lots, not just this one?
Not necessarily. The one before you right now is, the one that we're discussing right now is across from city hall, the city hall parking lot. The one that's a little further on the agenda is parking lot seven off of Lincoln Avenue, the, the lot we acquired last year. If you want to adopt a policy, we could limit what properties are able to do that. If you want to take on a case-by-case basis, if somebody calls up and says, we want to use parking lot seven, we bring it to you and say, can you use parking lot seven? We want to use the grassy area across from city hall, we bring it to you and say they want to use the grassy space across from city hall. We don't have to limit it, but we certainly could as part of a policy. But what's before you tonight, and the only thing before you tonight really, is do you want to allow LULAC to use the city hall parking lot for market days? And that's the, the question before the council right now and then later on the agenda, is allow Miguel Fajardo to use parking lot seven for Mexican Independence Day celebration on the 16th of September.
Alderman Broden?
Thanks, Mayor. So just to clarify that, so voting yes on these doesn't commit us to this new venture? Is that right? Is that what you just said?
If you're to vote yes, you're approving LULAC to use city hall parking lot on the remaining Sundays in September. And that's it. Pursuant to the agreement that the mayor and I would sign off on, which I apologize that hasn't gotten to you yet, but it wasn't ready for the packets.
You know, I would like to add that I would certainly, you know, like to see organizations, you know, that want to have events within city. I would like to see them be able to have a venue or a place where they feel that they could go. I also want to see the city protected regarding any future intangibles that may tie us up with. But for this particular instance, until we can get a policy drafted and get it before the city council, this was a request that was made to the city. And I think my own opinion would be that it's probably a worthwhile event. How we proceed in the future then would be dependent upon what we're able to policy, we're able to, excuse me, we're able to draft and then bring back to you. Anybody else have any comments? Alderman McGee?
Yeah. Being we're talking about this, how would that apply to, say, the Apollo when they have an event? They use the lot number seven for parking only, but as far as the trash that's left behind after an event, I assume our city guys are cleaning that up. Do we charge every time they have an event so that we can pay for a cleanup? Or, or do we charge for parking there maybe? I don't, I don't know.
But we have not in the past. If you want to look at having a pay lot, so to speak, that'd be subject to a different committee meeting, we can discuss doing that. I'm not sure how much trash is actually created by an Apollo event. I originally said let her buy that lot, but, but she, she'd rather have the city own it, I'm sure.
Alderman McGee?
Yeah, I just say there's quite a bit of trash because there's an alderman picking it up right now, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, I don't dispute that at all. I know I had received a complaint about the individuals that have the above-ground garden and that whenever we have events, they seem to use the, those gardens as a, you know, trash receptacle. And of course, they've got to go in and fish it out and what have you. So I understand that, Alderman McGee, and that's a good point. So, anything else? Hearing none then, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve LULAC to use the city hall parking lot for market days events for the Sundays in September 2022 commencing September 9th, 2022, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. pursuant to an agreement acceptable by the city attorney. Amplified music and alcohol shall be prohibited. Pursuant to an agreement acceptable by the city attorney, amplified music and alcohol shall be prohibited. That's the motion, any other discussion? Hearing none, Alderman Snow.
And for the purpose of vehicles, because it is, correct me if I'm wrong, most of them are twenty-four-hour parking limit per se, but we don't generally just go around and start marking and towing unnecessarily, but what, what would be your tentative deal if you had a car that was parked in there? That they'll just have to work around that car, and if that car shows up, they can have access to leave and they'll have to guide them out?
Gina's begging to answer this question.
So, Buchanan Street Strolls, we put up the signs that say no parking. Stroll started at one, I usually got downtown at nine A M. because there would always be one or two cars parked regardless. Most of the time, people that were at the bars Friday or Saturday night didn't want to drive home, so good, don't drive home. But then they never came back after cars in time. So then I would have to start going to all the businesses to try to hunt them down. One time it was a guy getting a tattoo, but fifty-fifty, I could find the patron in one of the local businesses and ask him to move. The other times, we'd just set up around the car and they were trapped until the event was done. And we would have to shift our layout around to work around it, and that's what it is. It's happened when I had the farmer's market for, what, three years, Heritage Days, it always happens. Someone doesn't obey by the signs and, like I said, spend a couple hours trying to hunt them down, can't find them, then you just work around it and they get trapped until it's over.
Any other, excuse me, any other questions?
It does raise an interesting question, because I don't know if we can actually just trap somebody's vehicle. That's, we may have done in the past, I don't know if I'd recommend doing that, and I don't know what you tell people, because it's, if the council authorizes it and I can put it in the agreement, we'll, we'll shut the parking lot down the night before the event.
I would say for this scale, and obviously, you know, as we discussed, a wide variety of potential, you know, events in the future. But for the two tonight on this scale, I think if someone came and wanted to move out, they could get their car safely out. As you know, with strolls, we can have a thousand plus people down there, Heritage Days, we're talking thousands. It's not safe to move the cars, especially because there is alcohol in the crowd, you know, people aren't thinking as straight. So it is a safety concern where these are going to be more low-key, not as highly attended, it would probably be safe to maneuver around. Also, we had discussed, Drell brought it up, the, you know, the concrete barricades versus the portable barricades for the events that the city holds, because of the crowd and the alcohol and that the people are walking in the street, we use the concrete barricades. You can't really get your car out because of the concrete barricades trapping it in. For both of these events and all future events, I put up, sent it to police and fire to make sure that there is no safety concerns. Obviously, you can't be too safe nowadays, to see if they thought concrete barricades were warranted, because then that opens up the whole can of worms of overtime and, you know, liability and all that stuff. And it was decided that, you know, this scale of an event, concrete barricades weren't warranted. So again, it'd be easier to get cars out if need be, because of the lack of the concrete barricades. Now, if there ever was a larger event where they said for safety reasons, concrete barricades are needed, again, that's something that the council would really have to think about because of the overtime costs associated and the liability of them.
Okay, thank you, Gina. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item D, motion to waive referral to committee, section two dash eighty-eight of the city's code in reference to allowing Miguel Fajardo to utilize municipal parking lot number seven for Mexican Independence Day celebration. We have a motion, motion by Alderman Snow, do we have a second? Second by Alderwoman Freeman. Any discussion, any comments? Okay. Alderwoman Prather? Yeah. All right, so we have a motion and a second, hearing no other discussion, seeing no other discussion. All those in favor will answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, and then we move to item E, approve Miguel Fajardo to use a municipal parking lot number seven for Mexican Independence Day celebration on September sixteenth twenty twenty-two from four to nine P M. Pursuant to an agreement acceptable to the city attorney and mayor, amplified music and alcohol shall be prohibited. Can I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, do we have a second? Second by Alderwoman Freeman, any discussion regarding that motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, we just automatically plugged in amplified music prohibited. But Gina, I don't know, are they aware of that kind of prohibition, and how's that playing into their plans?
Um, no, and I admit, since I took some time off last week, that I did not look at the agenda very closely till today. I did let both applicants know that it'd be on the agenda tonight, encouraged them to be here, in the case there was questions. But I think the music is a big factor, it's going to be music, dancing, and food trucks. So I would imagine without music, he may not have the activity then.
So I don't know that the council wishes to include that prohibition. Of course, I mean, I recall we have a festival, we don't, Fiesta Market does, and I pray who sponsors that one. And that's on private property in their private parking lot, but they have music. And I believe that's in close proximity to Four Seasons and some other residential.
Correct, it is close proximity to Four Seasons in Oak Brook, and they are limited to a decibel level. Because obviously, what I consider loud, you may not consider loud and vice versa. So we do limit them to a pretty standard decibel level.
Do you call it that is?
I can go pull the fella real quick.
We could just limit to the same decibel level, if the council wanted to go that way, we'd establish the same metric as we use for the Fiesta Market event. Chief Swabe has been.
When I was doing some research, because I had gotten contacted by one of the representatives that was putting on that festival, and we were looking at the decibel level, based off the research I did, the decibel level that was in the city's agreement was merely nothing more than us sitting here talking in normal voices. So it was significantly low. And if that's the direction that the council and city wishes to go, then we're probably going to need to get the appropriate equipment to measure the decibel level as the ordinance states.
So, Alderwoman Freeman asked a, a good question, because when we were on the previous one, she had pointed out that amplified music and alcohol shall be prohibited, is that in one and not the other? When I looked at it, what was in front of me is what you see as well. It shows that under the motion, it was prohibited. So, I don't know, Gina, what, is that a deal breaker or what?
I think it may be a deal breaker. Now, LULAC didn't even ask for music, so prohibiting music for something, prohibiting something they didn't even ask for, you know, it's not going to faze them. And I think one could argue the proximity to single-family residences. I know there are apartments downtown, but when you live downtown above a commercial apartment, there's a level implied that it's not going to be a quiet backyard. You know, you live in a commercial district, you're going to have commercial sounds and noises. That's implied, living in the downtown area versus single-family. It's, it's a, it's a different setting. So I would, I would say music to a certain, you know, loudness. And also, his event is not going late into the night, I don't think.
It's four to nine. Nine.
Close to nine at night? Four to nine. So it's not, it's five hours, which isn't, you know, an extremely long duration or late into the night for a Friday night. So, I think it should be okay as long as we, you know, put a limit on decimals. And again, if we start getting in the habit of that, then obviously, I don't know what the cost is, but the city will have to obtain a decimal reader, so we can better track that.
Alderman, Alderwoman Prather, then Alderman Snow.
Okay. Gina, I noticed here it says, if possible, we would like for you to help us with four to six garbage cans. Are they also aware that they're going to be responsible for cleaning up their own mess?
Yes, I have talked to him. He does know that he has to supply his own garbage. He knows he has to supply his own power, that he cannot plug into the city power down there, that he needs the liability insurance and that all of the food trucks also need to name the city as an additional insurer, which is something that for strolls and hometown Christmas and Heritage Days and all the events that I'm involved with, the food trucks have to name us, so we're not treating these events any differently when it comes to the food trucks and insurance. But yeah, he knows that we will not be providing him garbage or power.
Alderman Snow.
So, when we were talking about expenses incurred by the city, so if at some point we need to get a decimal reader, I don't know, was that a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred dollar item?
Chiefs, any?
Last time I looked into it, it was anywhere between five hundred and fifteen hundred dollars. The difficulty is, there's different levels you can get, even your standard decimal meter, they're not particularly expensive. The way that our zoning code is set up, and we run into this every once in a while, Alderman Burton's had to live it a little bit. We have two sections of our code that deals with noise and regular, one is just disturbing the peace. To a reasonable person, is it so loud that it wakes you up at night? And that's the one we actually usually use to enforce our noise ordinance, and we've had success with that in court. Because usually the judge looks at it and uses a sliding scale and says, it's reasonable to cut your grass at two in the afternoon, it's not reasonable to cut your grass at two in the morning. And I can, I can gain some compliance that way. The other section is much more detailed, it's in our zoning code. It sets forth specific decimal amounts, decimal levels, you are not allowed to exceed at the property line of your property. But the problem is, it's based on octaves. So you can have, and I'm just making things up now, up to five decimals at one octave, and it might be up to eight decimals at second octave. So whatever decimal meter you buy has to be able to measure all the octaves at all the decimals, so that ruins a little bit more money. I believe they're under two thousand dollars, they're not break the bank, but then you also have to have somebody that knows how to use it on duty when an event is happening. And you, I presume, have to have it, you know, kind of certified every once in a while to make sure it's, it is actually accurate. I don't know the cost of those. We've never done it because I just simply rely upon the old standard. Does it bother the reasonable person? I can guarantee that a loud festival-type music might bother me if I'm trying to sleep, I'm working through shift. And it might not bother Alderman McGee if he's having a beer at the event and enjoying it. So it's, what's reasonable at that point.
So, I will make the motion to amend and allow amplified music at this, on this event.
Will that include any decimal level requirement?
Per the typical used at previous festivals that we've made allowance for.
Okay. Okay, we have an amendment to the motion on the floor. Yeah, do I have a second? Second by Alderwoman Prather? Any discussion, no, there is no discussion on the amendment. Any discussion, Alderwoman Frank?
Gina, did they ask for music? Oh.
See, I didn't, I saw the stage, but I didn't know that that was for music, so.
Okay. Any other questions on the amendment to the motion? Alderman McGee?
Yeah, I just think that amplified music, we're just going to run into some complaints.
Alderman Snow?
And to be quite frank, if there are complaints, shut down the amplified music, that's it. You know, we're doing them a favor by allowing them to hold it. If they can't make it amenable to the local people in that area, then it shuts down. They don't get the amplified music. And unfortunately, that'd be incumbent upon the police department to enforce that at that point. And if it becomes a problem, then we'll start dealing with that on a more stringent basis and come up with better solutions.
For purposes of this event, I could try and draft the agreement, I have not done it yet in this part of, I can probably get the agreement drafted in such a way that gives the city authority to terminate the music if we have more than a couple complaints about loud music. They're going to have to sign the agreements, I've agreed to it at that point. I know that, for example, with Fiesta Market, in the past, Chief Noble would actually go out there, and the fire department actually had a little decimal meter, he'd walk around. I don't think he knew how to use it. Yeah, but he had a good ear for it. And, but I do know, and I think, I don't know if Chief would, he can correct me if he's had the opportunity to do this, but there were a couple times they started getting complaints, and they walked there and said, hey, guys, you've got to turn it down. And they turned it down. But it didn't make it go away, and quite frankly, you know, the first few strolls we had, we had complaints. I don't know if you've received complaints on Fiesta Market's event the last couple of years, but I know the first one, there were some, so.
Yeah, this last one, we received a couple, but, you know, explained that this was something that was approved through the city and the circumstances behind it, ultimately, when we left, they understood, weren't exactly happy, but understood. The issue with the decibel levels, like I had said previously, because I had taken the steps to actually use the decimal meter that the fire department currently has, but the way it was written within the agreement, the decibel level was so low that, you know, like I said, conversational speaking would have reached that decibel level. So I simply explained to a person I was dealing with that, you know, I didn't have the authority to just arbitrarily authorize them a level above what they had agreed to. So that might be something, if the council wants to approve this going forward, maybe revisit that authorized decibel level. Because, yeah, any, any music that's amplified is going to be, you know, beyond that decibel level just by turning it on.
Kids yelling in the bouncy house would be louder than that decibel level.
Well, and, you know, just a general search, you know, I'm showing that thirty decibel level is a normal conversation, sixty, no, I'm sorry, thirty decibel level is a whisper, sixty decibel level is a conversation, ninety-five is a motorcycle engine running, so, just to kind of give you an idea.
Is that a Harley or an Indian?
Does, does not specify.
Okay. Alderwoman Freeman?
Yeah, I don't see what the big deal is, it's literally a five-hour event that ends at nine P M., so I think people can probably muddle through that.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have an amendment and a second to the motion, which is to remove amplified music from
To allow amplified music.
To allow, okay. To allow amplified music and that to be acceptable with what the city had done on previous events, pretty much. Okay, Alderwoman Freeman?
So, we're leaving the alcohol prohibited in there, so that, that's going to be huge for the noise as well, it's just music.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion, second on the amendment, all those in favor of the amended, the motion is amended. All those in favor of the amended, of the motion as amended, of the amendment to the motion will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please?
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Nay.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Burton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Freeman? I mean Frank?
Nay.
Motion?
Four in favor?
Motion failed. Oh, does it? Is that right? Okay. All right, see what I learned. Okay. Motion passed. Amendment passed.
Requires a simple majority of the aldermen present to pass an amendment like that to the motion on the floor.
Okay.
Because this is not an expenditure nor a new ordinance, nor does it create a liability for the city, it probably simply, it just needs a simple majority of the council to pass it.
Okay, then we need a motion, or that motion passed. And then we would have the vote on the motion as amended, that's, that was amended.
Is that the same threshold?
That would require, in my opinion, because it does create the potential for liability, the actual motion to approve it, and you're authorizing the execution of an agreement, six aye votes.
Okay. All right. Any question on the amended motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please?
McGee?
Nay.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Burton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Nay.
Nay? Freeman?
Aye.
Four in favor?
Motion's lost. Okay, thank you. We have motions forwarded from commi, excuse me. Gina, did you have a question?
If it's not appropriate, excuse me, but I know he's probably going to ask, but I let him know. Is there a way to vote for it to be no music and see how that turns out, to try to salvage what we can of the activity?
He should have answered if he's going to go there.
Okay.
He, he did, he did have an understanding that we were going to have a meeting tonight? All right. Moving along, motions forwarded, excuse me? Oh, motions forwarded, my hearing's getting that bad. Messages forwarded from the Committee of the Whole Public Safety, Finance, and Personnel of August 22, 2022. Motions out of, motions out of Public Works Chairwoman Freeman?
A, motion to approve the street closure at State Street between Pleasant Street and Logan Avenue, as well as Logan Avenue between State Street and Main Street, for the Belvedere Area Chamber of Commerce Downtown Business Trick or Treat Event on October 26, 2022, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m.
Okay, thank you. We have motion out of committee. Is there any questions regarding that motion? Any comments? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please?
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Okay, and then 11 under other, before we move into, before I ask for executive session, I'd forgot a couple things at the beginning of this meeting. The fire department had the MDA muscular dystrophy, they had passed the boot. Chief Shadle had informed me that that was quite a success. So Chief, do you want to comment on that, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. It's always great to see the community in four hours by filling the boots through donations. They raised over $11,600. And then over the weekend, at the Oasis, they raised another $1,000, for a total of $12,600 going to MDA. And the thing about the donations is that they, MDA tries to keep those local, so that will benefit people with muscular dystrophy in our area with either medical devices or supplies, or to send the kids to camp. So just like to thank the community and thank the firefighters for volunteering their time.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. And also, Chief Shadle, if you look at him tonight, he looks brilliant. He looks a lot smarter than he was. He was, he was two weeks at a chief's training session, so Chief, welcome back and...
Thank you, sir. It was quite an honor. I got to spend the last two weeks at the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland, and it was a two-week class on command and control of things that hopefully I never have to deal with in my career, but it was natural and man-made disaster, so large terrorist events, or tornadoes, or floods. And then since it is nationwide, there was, we had to cover earthquakes and hurricanes, so some of those aren't as probable threats for us, thankfully, but we covered the gamut with firefighters and fire chiefs from all over the country. So it was a great opportunity. All of, most all of it is grant-funded too, so it was, other than my time, we, I just had to pay for a meal plan, but everything else was provided through grants through FEMA. So it's a great opportunity, and it's good to be back.
Welcome back, Chief. Thank you. And I had commented a little bit earlier on it, but Chief Woody, we did have a swearing in of a new police officer. You may want to comment on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this morning, 10:00 a.m., we swore in a new police officer, Matthew Davis. Comes to us as a lateral candidate from Rockford Police Department, with two years' certified experience, so we're happy to have him. We're still down right now, two officers. We have an officer that is going through a disability process, so it's possible we could have three openings here in the near future, but definitely two currently. And it's something that, we're trying to get those positions filled, but as you can imagine, right now, it's difficult getting people that are interested in the law enforcement profession, but with recruiting and our lateral attempts, we hope to improve that here in the near future.
Thank you, Chief, and welcome, Officer Davis. Thank you. So, we have item A, an executive session pursuant to 2C5 of the Open Meetings Act to discuss the purchase or lease of real property. Could I have a motion to go into that? Executive session? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman McGee. All those in favor will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay?
Snow?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Okay, and for the record, yes, sir, we'll go into executive session at 8:27, or there, close to that, as, get the city attorney to take us off the air.